I get a motion to approve the agenda. I move to approve the agenda. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
First up is information items, foster youth football shoulder pad donations to Housel Middle School.
Um, I just thought it would be important for the record that we thank the foster youth football program. They donated, and I don't want to tell you how many sets pile was huge if you saw the picture. Um, and we just want to really um honor and say thank you for the partnership. Um, they work really hard to raise their funds and when they had new pads, they brought them to us. And we have a wide variety of sizes and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to publicly thank them in case anybody's listening or somebody goes back. Those kinds of partnerships are what makes our district work. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Are there any visitors? Anyone online that would like to comment tonight? Okay. Hearing then, we'll go to student representative report. Start with Sammy.
I can start. Um, well, I just want to report that we did put up our posters for, it has like a QR code on it for students to scan it on their phone. And they can go ahead and put inquiries that they want to. And so we're hoping that as the school year goes on, we can get lots of, you know, input and stuff like that. We also did get approved to put a little inquiry box in the office. And so we're excited for that to get some traction too, if anybody wants to remain anonymous. And we also have, it's the third week of school and so we've already had over ten clubs start meetings and start everything going on, stuff like that. And so we're really excited to see everything rolling.
Well, great.
Um, adding on to the inquiry box thing, Mr. Hader agreed to make the box for us. He's our woodshop teacher, so that should be pretty exciting. Um, school sports are all up and running. I think everyone's had their first games or meets. And freshman camp will take place this Friday led by leadership and ASP.
Libia. Um, National Honor Society is preparing for their balloon rally breakfast, so members are currently selling tickets. Um, and signing up to get club volunteer hours. Sorry, I'm quiet today. The posters in the high school, like Sammy said, we set them up and we're hoping to get in contact with the middle school to implement them in there as well. We also, I just thought of this right now, we introduced ourselves at the first assembly.
Any questions for the student representative? Thanks for your report. First discussion item is school building report and presenter is team elementary school principal Jesse Wolf.
So Jesse's not been feeling well, kind of like it's kind of seems to be in the air right now. So, Mrs. Wilson, are you ready?
I'm on, yeah. I can't turn on my video though, so, but I'm here. Um, and I apologize, I just been fighting this head cold and today like got to me right at the end of the day. And I was like, I'm just gonna go home, do my report and go to bed. So, um, we'll start. I, um, we welcomed a hundred and eighteen kinders and thirty-six TKs to our building. Um, which is a great, it's a great number for us to have. Um, our kinder numbers, I know that we were concerned about them at the beginning, but they continued to rise through August surprisingly. And, um, so they're all in our building. We've, you know, spent the first couple of weeks just really welcoming them, learning how to come to school, how to do lunch, how to do breakfast, how to do recess, how to be in a classroom. And it's really taken all hands on deck. So, a big thank you to everybody who has helped to register them, get classrooms ready, um, the building ready, welcoming our parents and just helping out those first few days of school. Um, I know we had some board members and district office staff, so we really appreciate all the extra hands that, um, have helped us. So, it's been good. We, um, have spent the first few weeks just really working on our expectations and our rules. Um, tomorrow, we're having our first, um, security drill. So we're doing a secure and teach and then we'll do, um, an evacuation so that students know how to do secure and teach. And then where, where they go for an evacuation. So we're doing that tomorrow. So just really kind of getting into the routines of our school. Um, if you, I mean, if we look, as we continue, like I said, we've spent these last few weeks just really working on our routines. Next week, we started to, we have our first PLC with our teachers. And so back into that flow of starting to look at curriculum and, um, and the data of our students as we have started our initial testing. Um, this year, we're really gonna work, um, continue to work on ARC. And so I know Deanna shared a little bit about ARC. Um, I was just, I just pulled up some data real quick. Let me see if I can find it super fast. Oh boy, where'd it go? Oh geez, sorry. I'm trying to do multi, multiple screens. Um, so in, in two thousand twenty-two, our first year of implementation, we had seventeen students who were on grade, uh, seven, sorry, seventeen percent of students who were on grade level proficient or above in the beginning of the school year. And last year, we ended our school year at fifty-two percent of students. So I think that has a lot to say with the implementation process that we've been going through with our, um, staff and our teachers. They've done an excellent job with that. And then our other focus this year is gonna be continuing our work around math. Um, we worked a lot on alignment last year, so still building our understanding of standards. Um, working on that alignment still, making sure assessments are doing what we want them to do. So asking students what we want, giving us quick data, reviewing that data to be able to turn around and intervene, um, as soon as possible. So those are really our two focuses for this year as we move forward. So. Any questions?
Thank you, Jesse. Are there any questions? Thank you. Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Our next report comes from special services director, Dr. Allen. You'll need to make sure your microphone mic is clean.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you. I'm excited to report to you what's new with special services here this fall. So our focus has really been on strengthening our team and fostering open and collaborative communication. And one of the things that Kim mentioned at the last board meeting was that I made it a point to go and visit all of our special services classrooms throughout the district on day one. And I gave everyone a note of encouragement to let them know how much we appreciate them and a sweet treat. And I did not want you guys to feel left out, so I've brought one for each of you today. In each of your roles, you're a big part of our success as well, so I want to acknowledge you. Um, some other things that have been happening for special services before school started. Nelson Cardenas, who is the counselor at Witstran and I, uh, trained sixteen different parent educators and teachers in the MANT system, so they did recertification training. And that's a district adopted, trauma-informed, relationship-based program. And it helps our staff learn how to prevent and de-escalate and then safely respond to any behavioral escalations. And some of the key components are that it emphasizes dignity, respect and proactive support. So that was a great start to the year and we're planning to train further staff as the year goes on. Um, I hosted a meet the director opportunity for our families as well as staff. And again, just wanted to make myself available and provide, um, opportunities to meet people and start those conversations. In terms of funding, I have a great report. So we were awarded, um, safety net funding totaling two hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And that is to help support the high cost of some of our special education services. So of those funds, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars represent state funding. And then the remaining eleven thousand, fifty-eight dollars represent federal funding. And so that's something that will help us to meet the needs of some of our most needy students. And to continue supporting staff, one of the things that we're offering this year is Tuesday drop-in office hours. So it's an open time every Tuesday where staff can get technical support. Um, of course, we're available at other times to help, but that's just a time that they can put on their calendar and know that we're available. Um, I also launched a special services newsletter to share positive updates and reminders with our team. So already I've sent two of those out. Um, and then just in summary, I wanted to share that we're really proud of the great start to the school year. And our kids are doing well, our, our teachers and parent educators are doing well, and we're building those positive, um, interactions with our families. So, any questions?
I'll just comment because Kim's gonna start coughing. Um, but we have applied for safety in the past, uh, sometimes under previous directors, sometimes not. We, this is more money than we've gotten that I can ever recall. Jennifer did an outstanding job. I know she had help and support from Delise and, yeah, and this was literally, she, had you done it before? Been a long time.
It had been a while, yeah.
And so she did a great job. And I mean, that's a big amount of money to offset costs we had already, we'd already spent. It was, it was done. So that was very helpful. It was wonderful.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome. All right, thanks everyone.
Our third discussion item is policy two thousand twenty, course design, selection and adoption of destruction material.
It's relatively brief policy, but an important policy for when we are adopting materials. Uh, our policy was relatively new, but, uh, Wazda up recently updated the policy based on some new law. And OSPI is requiring us to update our policy.
Anything that's noteworthy or very different from our current policy?
Uh, I, I would say not really significantly. There's still, it's still very similar. Some of, some of it was just rewording. The course design portion has the most changes, but some of it still is just maybe kind of in the layout. But they're really, I, it, it wasn't that much of a change, but it's a little bit different.
And we'll see this come back. Any question? My red line policy doesn't have any red lines.
I think Solina's chosen to blue lines. It has blue.
I think mine had neither.
I don't see lines on.
So I, I just downloaded the one from the board agenda and I, it doesn't have red lines, but it has blue line.
I had a really hard time figuring out what was.
Really, the, in the top, they just kind of made the language flow better, but the course design has, really has the most changed, that last part portion. And it's not very much of a change.
I, I read it and I didn't see anything concerning to me, but I also didn't know what changed, so.
We'd be happy to update and just send your email.
They made it a lot more, yeah, they, they really kind of made it more direct. Um, it just, I don't, I don't. It felt a little bit unnecessary to me, but we're required to do it, so we're doing.
We'll, we'll see this back and. Yes. Had the action item for second, first reading, first reading, okay. We'll go to action items. Number one, reduction in days for the twenty, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year director grant assessment and elementary program. District goal.
I just felt the need to support the district in this, um, and the other administrators that have already taken a step.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Yeah. First things, Kevin. I, um, I'll move to approve a reduction in days for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for the director of grants assessment and elementary program.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you, Kevin.
Motion passed. Thank you. Number two, Seattle University affiliation agreement. Hannah Cora.
So, uh, we, we see several of these come before the board. Our Seattle University agreement was expired. Um, and so we, this is just getting a current agreement on the book, so we can have interns in our district.
Questions for Deanna?
I have, I have a few questions. Um, Deanna, it looks like this expires in December. What are we getting for three months?
I think it's only because we're doing, like Seattle's, they're a little bit, uh, unique in the way they do things. They only like want to have it in effect while we are supposed, or will we have someone here? Whereas most of the colleges and universities do like three years. So they had a request to have someone placed and I had to say, well, we don't have a current agreement. So they like to do them just for like the time period someone's gonna be here. And so more over and over kind of with them if, but we don't get very many students from C, at Seattle U.
And this is for a school, like college or something?
Uh, no, this one is, this one is for, um, counseling.
I had a couple other questions or maybe like a general question. Um, it doesn't really talk much about Seattle's, uh, university's responsibilities, but it talks a lot about our responsibilities as well as, um, and maybe they're all the same and I just happened to catch it. But, um, that we have to hold the insurance of, uh, what is it, a million dollars? For this person?
We, yeah, we do have, um, that's pretty, pretty standard, uh, to cover, uh, any interns that we have off working in our district. Universities do carry insurance often too, but that's pretty standard part of our policy. We are, it's in, um, in almost, in most agreements. Just in case.
But they're not required to have, Se- Seattle's not required to carry insurance? Um, for their intern? It's just, it would all be on the district?
It doesn't reference that in this agreement, but the universities tend to, to carry them. They're just ensuring that we're carrying it, but I can get some clarification on that if you'd like.
I think it'd be worth just asking them about it.
No question? Jason, did you have any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, no, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to table this and bring it back to our next meeting? Which would be September twenty-fourth?
I would make a motion to table.
I'll second that.
All in favor of a motion to table this to the next meeting, September twenty-fourth? Say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Motion carried. Number three, second reading of policy three, one, two, two, excuse, unexcused absence.
There's been no changes.
Any, any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions. I will move to approve second reading of policy thirty-one, twenty-two, excuse and unexcused absence. Is there a second?
I have a quick question. Oh. So I mean, throughout, just going down through the draft where we get to. Section B, number one, it, it's got a lot of references that COVID nineteen in here. I'm just, I'm guessing that's used as like an example of why, I, I guess my, my comment is that could that also be worded as like Spanish flu or black plague or?
Yeah.
Like, I, 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 you guys are gonna think I'm all crazy, but I, I'm to the point where I'm COVID out. So my thought would be, can we strike COVID nineteen? I, I, I'm asking, I guess.
I guess the answer to the question is, of course we could, if you chose to. I do want you to know, we did have, I have two examples that I can give. I had my car at the service department today. That's kind of, you're gonna like, what does that have to do with this? They had half of their crew out in the last three days. They had to actually close their shop because they all had COVID. Now, I'm not, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing. And then we've had some employees recently positive. So I, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be there. I'm just saying it is something that we still deal with.
I, we also deal with, I mean, I mean, what, it could be any, I guess.
Brian, are you suggesting that you just take out the example? Or would you just say, in the event of an, of school closure due to a communicable disease outbreak?
Yeah.
Generically.
Right, because actually if we, um, so when you get to a certain level of disease, so say there was just a flu outbreak. Um, there, there can be a point where the, the health department recommends that you close your building, could be the flu.
Whooping cough is one that sometimes.
Whooping cough, it could be anything.
I think all of these that have a reference would.
You could just say communicable.
Said communicable disease.
Yeah, that'd be.
Do I revoke my motion?
Well. Proceed with your question. Draw your motion and then Brian, make the motion. Or anyone. So you were drawing your.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And I would motion to strike COVID nineteen from the policy. And replace it with communicable disease. Or not disease.
Or just, I think just strike it, but, well. Because it already says.
Communicable disease outbreak.
Move to strike.
Strike COVID nineteen.
Yes. And only reference. That full diseases.
outbreaks, natural disasters, other events, yeah.
Why restate your motion?
I motion to strike COVID nineteen. From policy thirty-one, twenty-two.
There is second. Oh, second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Because that was second, do I need to bring it back for a third with the rewrite? Or can we do it with just that? I don't know the clerical, or the procedural question to that.
The way Brian worded his motion.
We're good with it, just by taking, okay.
I would agree with that.
Any reference to COVID, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Action item number four, security officer quarterly certification.
So, um, we have reviewed our district policy on how we, uh, qualify our security officers. And it was brought to our attention that maybe we should have an independent qualifier from the district. Mr. Vogly no longer works for the district and he, um, brought this proposal forward.
Who was doing the training in the past?
We, we were doing them in, in-house. Um, so I, just to make sure that I explain this correctly, especially I have a couple of local law enforcement who sometimes listen. So, um, we have to qualify our, our officers according to our, our security, according to our policy, either hold what's called a Leosacard or a military with a concealed weapons permit. And there's different ways. And then quarterly, they have to shoot, and I apologize, I'm not gonna probably use the perfect technical term. They have to do a qualification of so many rounds inside a certain target size and so on and so forth. And then someone has to attest that they shot the rounds inside the, so on and so forth. And we've done that inside our own district. So officer one attests that three people do it. And then that person may, can't make an attestation on their own behalf. And so then they someone else has to attest that they've done the rounds or done the qualification requirements that's inside our policy. And so there's a form that they use and they do that. In addition, the hope would be if there's any changes or laws or things that we would do, that we would make sure that they receive those.
Does somebody at this time certify each other, our crime, SRO officer?
Yes, they can.
So we don't need to have it outside?
Not necessarily, no. And when I say not necessarily, that's up, up to the board. Um, we've not had any problems prior and we've been doing it the prior way since I've been here.
We didn't, RFQ or request for this, but we did not.
Mm-hmm. And I have confirmed that our past practice with, I have confirmed with legal counsel that our past practice was accepted.
So.
We're still, we're still set up to do that moving forward if we don't go this route?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
So.
Any problems with old way? Any, any thing that ever came up that?
Not, I mean, nothing that I've been, that has been brought to my attention. Some, some will say, are we qualifying at dusk? Are we qualifying at night? Are we doing those things? We didn't do them before and we would potentially have the difference. Um, but we try and only qualify during normal hours so that as our budget has been talked about, we don't have to pay overtime or right at night.
Jason, did you have a question?
Well, I don't, uh, more of a comment, I guess. Maybe it's a question, but I think it's already been answered. Um, you know, if, if we're training adequately and, and it follows, you know, whatever laws that govern our security officers, you know, I think, um, you know, just kind of like what we did with that was at frontline. I think in our current budget, I, I just don't think it'd be appropriate at this point to, to look at an outside source.
Other discussion? Is there a motion to approve security officer quarterly cert? Hearing then, we'll move on to number five. Vouchers and cases. Delete.
Can we, can you hear us, Delise?
Yes, I can hear.
Okay. How you doing this afternoon?
Good, are you?
I'm good.
It looks hot in there.
It is a little warm, but we've got to cooling down a little bit. Kevin, Kevin's fanning himself because he was at, uh, football practice, I think.
Ah, gotcha.
Any questions for Delise?
Delise, I had one question on, um, sorry, didn't get a chance to send you an email in advance. So nine, one, one, six, two, zero. I'm not sure if it helps to know when, perhaps when it was on, it was on the GF board.
Just a second, let me pull it up.
What was the check number again?
Nine, one, one, six, two, zero, um, Cannon Financial Services. So I just noticed there was a large late fee and it's posted twice.
Uh, yep, so.
What the big late fees for and to why we're getting hit twice with it.
Uh, well, we, we had a huge late fee because we had to pick and choose the bills that we were paying this summer. And so it was one of the ones that we ended up paying on the credit card. So it was something that we knew what, what was going to happen when we decided, you know, that we are just going to be paying utilities. And then, um, you know, we approved at the board meeting to use the credit cards thereafter for the things that we needed. And so we did that, but we did get, we did get hit with a late fee with that. we did get, we did get hit with a late fee with that.
Accurate that it's two late fees?
It is accurate, yes.
The math here. Sounds like that's a large
Uh, it, we could pull the invoice and send it to you if you'd like, but we, we have a very large contract with, with Canon.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I suppose there's not a lot you can do when you can't pay the bills. You gotta push it out. Um, yeah, I'd like to see that, though.
If we can definitely pull that and send it to you.
Like a high percentage considering the amount of the fees and the bill, I mean, it's twelve hundred dollars in fees for a seven thousand dollar bill.
Well, and that does not necessarily mean that it's just on that bill. We have several bills, not several. We have more than several bills that we pay to Canon for different machines at different locations. Um, so it's on our account as a whole. Um, but I, I will have those pulled and get it to you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Delete? Is there a motion regarding vouchers and payroll?
I'll move to approve vouchers and payroll.
Second.
All in favor? Name vouchers and payroll indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Consent agenda or consent items? A motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you. Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All in. Motion carries. Going to volunteer coaches. Oh, sorry. Reports. That is action item. Volunteer coaches is part of the consent agenda. I mean, I apologize. Mr. Gilman, directors of grant assessment and elementary program.
Uh, so we're in the process of hiring a migrant graduation specialist for the high school. Um, we started a book study with our admin team today. I thought the special went well. Um, we have Chris Clem coming for the first time to work with our elementary P L C on Friday. See, I have to look to see what she's crossing out. Okay. And, uh, we finished up our ELL screening, which has to take place within the first ten days of school or new enrollment. So, uh, working on systems and improving those systems, um, throughout all of the buildings. And that will be all. Yeah.
Questions for Mr. Gilman? Right, second report will become, will come from director of business and operations, Delise.
Uh, nothing for me tonight.
Okay. Jennifer Flores, superintendent.
Just a few things. Um, I, I'm sure Kim will probably talk about this too, but we did the state's day parade and of course there was an amazing turnout, I would say. Parents, if they were smart, they would have collected all that candy and they'd have their Halloween candy to give away because there was so much candy. I couldn't even, I mean, it, they, people, it was crazy amount of candy, but there was a great community turnout and the, each year I think we see more people. Um, and this year there was just a lot. It was a, it was a great community event and everything that happened down at the park and all kinds of stuff that went on. So that was fun. Um, I, I, I do wanna say, I think E S D one, two, three, we're working with Janelle and Drew and then Tamar Burns. I have spent almost all of my time on payroll the last, I don't even know, several days, and it's definitely not done. Um, but that's been great. And I just wanna do a little shout out to Kevin because if I didn't have him and he wasn't my partner right now, there's a lot of things, I couldn't do it all. I'm not sure who would be doing payroll right now. Uh, Kim can do it all herself, so we would, I don't know, we'd figure it out. So as a, as a partnership, we're getting things done. And our goal is to make sure it's done correctly. So we don't have, uh, things we have to correct later. And then, um, there probably one, another fun thing that I had to get to do is I did go help with breakfast and buses and all of that with, uh, with the kids. Um, and, uh, it's, it's just fun seeing them coming in. And there were some tears and things. Um, some of it was kids, some of it was parents. Um, but I think school's gotten off to a good start. So our buildings and our principals have done a great job.
Hannah?
Yeah.
Superintendent's report.
Oh, I always do my piece of paper. Um, so I'll, for the record, um, very exciting. We got to deposit the check for the white church. So this is public announcement that anything that happens with the white church or on the property is no longer our, um, our situation. Um, don't get me wrong, our, our new neighbors are going to be great partners and great friends and, and it's, we're excited to make that happen. But it was nice to put that money in the bank. Um, we still have no other real action on the other two parcels that are for sale at this time. Um, the one in legal, we have one case that was settled yesterday. That was very nice to get that finished and, and taken care of. And we do have one public records request, um, that we've done most of it for. Um, there was just one extension because we need to, we have to meet the deadline of the number of days and have a little piece, so we'll continue with that. Um, so this is a catch twenty-two. So the grass looks really, really green. The problem with really, really green grass, that means it's growing fast and getting lots of water, which means lots of mowing. And then you have dew coming on. And so then we're mowing and then we kind of get a clumpy look of grass because it comes out of the mower kind of clumpy. And then we have increased grass or you know, in the hallways and the things. So it's kind of a catch twenty-two, but we are aware of the need for mowing. Um, we had, um, to, we need to have a couple of fields that need to get mowed like twice in the next week or so to get them down where they should be and then striped. Really great stuff going on in the partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. So if you live back here or whatever in this part of the neck of the woods, if you drive around the backside, there's new beautiful black uh, chain link fence out there. And that is our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. And that's really, um, has a lot of positives. So when we do the, um, E cap remodel for the three classrooms on the corner of this building, um, the little fence that's there to kind of keep the playground situated doesn't have to be overly tall because we have a full secure fence out in the playfield area. So it's really good. And our neighbors to the west, now we have a strip of gravel there so that we're not having to mow their fence line and our weeds and, you know, just makes for a little more neighborly. In addition, I met with Benton P U D. Um, and I'm gonna be very honest, if anybody's listening, it might have been Benton R A to be very honest, I can't remember which one this, who was at the meeting today. Um, and the Boys and Girls Club, and they have a tree program. And so we're gonna plant a few more trees on the south side of the Boys and Girls Club in the edge kind of of what most people call the old practice field to allow some shade on that side of the building. So, uh, that was a good partnership. So we're gonna get that done. Um, we also walked the Boys and Girls Club in those three classrooms with the E S D partners, Matt Bonna, uh, Deanna, myself, Kevin, the architects, um, and Boys and Girls Club and Wenahar owners are up. So we're gonna have some good drawings to you shortly, um, about the three classrooms that we'll be able to build into that space. And that's with our grant dollars, which is a Department of Commerce grants. Um, I wanna talk a little bit, since we're talking about Boys and Girls Club, I wanna talk, it's a, it's a good problem. But there is, the numbers are so high at the Boys and Girls Club that we're struggling with transportation. Um, so we had a meeting today. And what I mean by struggling with transportation, we're having a, to figure out a way to get all of the students from House, High School, Housel and Heights down to the Boys and Girls Club before we go to pick up K R V and do it in a timely fashion. Um, so we met with everybody today. Um, Benton Franklin Transit got involved because they're gonna adjust their routes a little bit. And they're gonna do a pickup at the middle school for free. And they're gonna transport to, it's on their route. Right now their route comes by at the forty-third minute. But we, that's too early for middle school because it's released at fifty. So they're gonna adjust that route so that then they can pick up at the middle school, which is about eighty-five students and pick them up and drop them at the Boys and Girls Club, leaving room for the third, fourth and fifth graders for heights. It's a really positive thing. Um, the center islands at Heights and K R V, if you're listening, um, I know they're a little brown, a little weedy. We are going to peel them off. I don't know what you call it. Take out the grass and we're gonna put in big shale rock. That will save in water, save in mowing and so on and so forth. Um, thank you to our community again. If you've played at the pickleball courts, um, your balls often, if you miss the ball or whatever, it rolls into the court behind you. And so they've raised the money and the fence will go in, um, here in the next, it'll take about three to seven days. The material should be here the end of the week. And so that fence will go in. So Marcus Miller, Andy Gilson, Andy and, um, the fence, um, person is met and we've got it all laid out. So that was really exciting. Um, my, my leadership stuff is kind of like what Dana has said. We've been doing all of our normal things. Um, but we've been spending a lot of time in the payroll world. And so, um, I do have good news, though. We interviewed for a payroll officer today. I'm not positioned yet to say who we've hired. But we have our choice and we're doing the last of the reference checks and some things like that. Um, but we're very excited about this person and I'll be able to, I'll do a public announcement through email and so forth, probably tomorrow and then let it, you know, the community know. But that's really stark. But I'm on everybody to hear, this is a community training project. When I, I shouldn't say community. I'm gonna say all hands on deck training process. So with our E S D one seventy-one, E S D one twenty-three, um, Delise, Deanna, myself, Aurelia. And we're committed to a training through November or December. And then it'll still be training throughout the years because you only do W twos like once a year, right? And you do quarterly taxes and different things like that. So we're really gonna work on that partnership and see if we can build that person to be here for a long time to come. Um, we, our admin type meetings aren't really that much different. But we have operational one week and then instructional next week. And Kevin talked about that. So we're, um, really working on that part. We've increased our cabinet um, to include our special education, our special services director and our tech director and, and getting that because we're really trying to hone in on operations and processes is what I would kind of do. Um, I wanna publicly talk about transportation for a minute. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do an appeal. If you have a C D L or you are interested in working in the neighborhood to four to six hours a day, we need bus drivers, first of all. Um, we have five, four for sure, and probably a fifth one going into training. We pay for the training. You hear me, everybody? We pay for your time and we pay for the training. And it's a really good job if you're going to college or you're, there's lots of things you get benefits after, you know, if you're a full-time employee, even though it's not a full eight hours a day, you qualify for benefits. We really need drivers because what's happening is we have enough drivers to run our routes. But I'm gonna use Camp Dudley as an example. We're going to Camp Dudley at the first part of October. Well, those drivers need to go to Camp Dudley and that means we are two, because it's two buses. So we're two drivers short. So now we're having to figure out how to do that, right? So, and then athletics, if we need to leave at one fifteen or two o'clock in the day, that pulls the driver off of a normal route. And so our neighboring districts and some other districts have been helpful. They've come and picked up our, our athletes to get them to the facility and then we go back and pick them up to bring them home. Which is actually, if you think about it, one extra trip, right? Because you got in the middle. And we pay for that. Uh, we have to pay for the mileage for, for that. It's just like would be hiring an Uber, I guess, right? We're, but we're using a, another school district. So we need drivers. Now, once we get the five trained, that would give us, um, two substitutes to fill in on trips. And then our new, um, mechanic and Jaime, our director, and Daniel, our lead mechanic, they're all driving also. So it's really all hands on deck. Um, so I just wanna make sure everybody understands we're working really hard at that. And I always make a little, try to make it lighthearted. It says where you'll see Kim and I kind of made a note joke in there, said nowhere because I'll be in my office doing payroll. Um, no, that's not true. We got, uh, red, white night coming. I've been doing chamber things and rotary and so forth, but it is kind of lighthearted. So and the state's day parade, I was the one running along the backside throwing candy to all the people in the back row because they weren't running out to get candy. So we gave the candy to the back row. But I think that's it for tonight.
Hannah?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Um, well, I mostly just wanted to say thank you to our admin team. You know, you've been doing a lot, juggling a lot, wearing a lot of hats. You've given up your own personal base, um, you know, just to help out with the district budget situation. And I just think it's an excellent example of collaboration and teamwork and, um, leadership. So thank you. Well, you go. Um, and then just for my fellow board directors, the general assembly, WASTA general assembly is next weekend. Saturday morning, I am actually wedding and unable to attend. I'm our rep. So if anyone wants to fill in for our district, you let me know.
I shall.
Right now.
Um, I would like to, um, I know Kim mentioned earlier, I also like to thank Prostate Football for donating shoulder pads. Um, I think that, um, partnerships with Prostate Football is something that's, that has been a community asset. Um, so it's always good to see, um, programs helping each other out. Um, I was able to make it down for the first day of Kinder, um, which was interesting, first time I'd um, been able to do that. And I, I'll just throw out Jesse Wilson, her staff, the, they've, they've got that whole whole program pretty dialed in. That was pretty amazing to see how they've get those kids in there the first day of school, get them lined up, sent where they need to go. Um, that was, that was awesome to see. So, um, thank you to, to Jesse and her staff. Um, and then I just wanna thank students and community. I thought, uh, the Friday night football game here last week was that, that's a more people than I think we've seen in those stands in quite a while. That was, that was awesome to see. So appreciate that from students, community and hopefully they'll show up again this Friday.
Thank you, Brian. I, I have nothing on my list. Jason, do you have a report?
Uh, no, thank you. And Michelle, I could probably help with the general assembly if you need it.
Thanks, Jason. I'll email you.
Okay.
All right, this concludes our meeting. Our next meeting will be a regular board meeting here September twenty-fourth at six P M. We are adjourned.